So moved.
Second.
By trustee Danny, second by trustee Suansky. Well, quickly, please call the roll.
Trustee Danny? Ganzey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Suansky?
Yes.
President Wallace.
Yes. So, welcome, everybody. There was a purpose to all of that. Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting. There were some things on the committee meeting that we wanted to discuss so we could actually vote for them on the board meeting. So that was the way we got around doing that. So with that being said, I will move into the committee meeting under building and zoning. Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one thing on our agenda tonight, and that's the liquor store at nine five five South Route fifty-nine. They're asking for a special use permit. The petitioner is requesting a special use permit to sell packaged beer, wine, liquor in a proposed liquor store to be located at nine five five South Route fifty-nine in a B three neighborhood shopping zoning district, the Apple Valley Center. I think this is pretty straightforward. Does anyone have any questions in the committee?
We don't have any questions, so let's move to the board, right?
Sure.
Yep, we'll move this to the...
The commission.
Oh, the plan commission.
Oh, yeah, it's the plan commission.
This is in the same shopping center as Gambit's?
No.
Okay, okay, good. Right, so we'll forward this on to the plan commission for their public hearing, and that's all we have under building and zoning.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item on our committee meeting this evening is finance and golf. Chairman Danny.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item we have this evening is the sewer rate increase review. And with that, I'm going to ask Todd to go over this with us.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been working on sewer rates for years now. We were on a three-year plan. We did the rate increases for two years. Then we paused the third year due to the pandemic. Then we paused it one more year due to the extension of the pandemic. And we were gonna... When we went over the budget review, we were going to increase the rates for that third phase year over two years. Now, we're proposing that we increase that third year over four years, and the way that we're planning on doing that is by using two million dollars of the recovery money that we are receiving. The village is slated to receive five point two million. So we received half of that already, and we've earmarked to spend two million of that towards the sewer rehabilitation program. So that would help free up the cash, and so we wouldn't need to raise the rates as fast. So what I'm showing now is that we would need to raise the rates four hundred and seventy-five... Enough to generate an additional four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year, each year for the next four years. Now, the big item that we're ramping up for is the wastewater treatment plant I E P A loans. That would be just over two million dollars a year in debt service. That's for thirty-seven million dollars at point nine percent. The other project, we've already issued bonds in two thousand nineteen for the Devon Avenue access flow facility, and that would get the Cook County portion, the rates up to be able to cover that. Right now, we already started raising the DuPage rates, but we haven't had to start paying yet, so that's why we're able to make the bond payment. We're using some DuPage money, some Cook County money on that. So for four years, the Cook County rates, the increase would be... It would all be about a dollar twenty-five per month for a bill of six thousand gallons. That works out to be five point one percent the first year, four point eight percent second, four point six percent, four point four percent the fourth year. DuPage County rates, it would be an additional three dollars and seventy-two cents a month for a bill of six thousand gallons, and that's where the eight point six, seven point nine, seven point three, six point eight percent increases would be. So right now, we have a pretty good cash balance in the sewer fund. We're projecting April thirty, twenty twenty-two balance at about three and a half million dollars. Part of that is due to holding back a little bit on the rehabilitation program. We'd budgeted a million dollars a year. If we stop right now at five hundred thousand dollars, that would help us bridge some of the cash flow gap as well. But with this phased-in four-year increases, it would bring our cash balance to just about fifty thousand dollars over the minimum cash balance at the end of April thirty, twenty twenty-six. In your packets, what I have here on the screen now is just the balance projections. So this is our budget, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, where we're showing an estimated... I'll get my little highlighter. Showing an estimated three million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars at the end of the year. That would have our capital projects at eight hundred thousand dollars. Another thing that was put off, we had scheduled or budgeted a lift station that was going to be over a million dollars. We were just... We are just looking at doing the engineering this year, and the lift station pushed off till next year. So that's where some of the cash flow, some of the cash balance is coming from. Moving on to twenty twenty-three, so here's where we'd be back. Million dollars for rehabilitation program, one point four million for lift station, and this is where we would add seven hundred dollars... Four hundred and seventy-five thousand additional revenue plus five hundred thousand from the recovery money. That's listed... Basically, the recovery money is in miscellaneous along with Illinois I E P A funds and also spending of the bond money. So we would be using about a million, two next year if we stuck with that budget. That would bring our balance down to two million, three hundred and eighty-one. Twenty-three, twenty-four, an additional four hundred and seventy-five thousand with one million dollars use of recovery money. We would be using about eighty-seven thousand dollars. Another four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase, here's where our revenue keeps increasing with five hundred thousand dollars in recovery money, our balance. And this is when we would start the first year of the wastewater treatment plant loan payments. It starts in the fall of twenty twenty-three. So that fiscal year would be about two million, thirty thousand dollars for the wastewater treatment plant. And then the fourth year, another four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We would still be using about three hundred and six thousand in fund balance. Take us down to one point eight million. That would just be fifty-three thousand dollars over our minimum balance. So that's basically the minimum increases that we would need to see to keep going. I know ending with a three hundred and six thousand dollar shortfall means that we would still need to increase rates or something, but that's quite a few years out, and there'll be plenty of time to make some tweaks or some adjustments in that. I couldn't really tell you what's going to be happening in twenty-five, twenty-six. So that is the cash flow that's needed to keep our capital improvement program going, to make our loan payments, our debt service payments. So I don't know if there's any questions. You want me to get into some details between why Cook County... I'll show you one. Show you one quick spreadsheet. So here is twenty-six... My highlighter is not going to work as well. Twenty-five, twenty-six, operating. This is kind of where we're going to end up at that last year. So our operating is going to be five million, seven hundred and three. That includes our one million rehabilitation, those kind of capital improvements. Then we've got our Devon Avenue bond payment wastewater treatment plant and our wastewater I E P A loan from twenty fourteen. So our total cash flow needs for twenty-five, twenty-six is eight million, four hundred. And currently, we're at six million, two hundred and forty-five. So we spread the operating twenty-eight percent Cook County, just about seventy-two percent DuPage County, and then we add... That's where I'm getting the two million, one fifty-seven is what we're going to be needing from Cook County by the year twenty-five, twenty-six, six million, two hundred from DuPage. So we need... There's an increase required, four hundred and eight thousand annual increase from Cook County revenue, one million, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand. I rounded that down a little bit to one million, nine hundred over the four years, three hundred and fifty-four from Cook, one million, five hundred and forty-five. And then I spread those amounts over the four years. That's where eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-one a year for Cook, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-four... Three hundred and forty-eight dollars from DuPage. That's where those percentages come from. The actual rates, I didn't include those in your packet, but I can send you... I can have those for the next meeting, the actual rates and the increases between Cook, DuPage, Kane. I'm not adding anything to Kane County. We did have a twenty percent increase to Kane County in twenty seventeen, eight percent, and then a seven and a half percent. But these increases are for capital. We don't really have any capital debt service kind of big projects going on in Kane County this time.
Could Mr. Dinges kind of walk us through why only DuPage County is paying thirty-eight million dollars for that project and not Cook County?
Sure. Well, the thirty-seven million dollar I E P A loan that we're anticipating receiving from the I E P A is for the bittersweet treatment plant, which is in DuPage County. It takes the flow from DuPage County. There is the Devon M W R D project that we're building to eliminate the excess flow facility. We're building a lift station and force main to bring it down to the bittersweet plant. But the plan improvements are... It's for DuPage County. There is going to be some excess flow that comes from Cook, but it's really minimal when you look at three sixty-five, twenty-four, seven. I mean, the amount of times that Cook County will... Well, that we anticipate Cook County discharging down to the DuPage is very small compared to DuPage running twenty-four, seven every day, you know, every day flows, so.
Dan, would you just segue there to the requirement that the E P A is putting on the DuPage or the Devon Avenue facility and why that criteria changes between sending it down to bittersweet versus leaving it at Devon? That eighty-five percent.
Okay. So a little history on the Devon excess flow facility and M W R D. The Devon excess flow facility is just south of Lysburg Park. What happens there is Cook County flow, so that everything pretty much north of Devon normally goes to a lift station at the Berto, and I have a... Actually, I could bring it up. So this is the Devon excess flow facility, south of Devon. The flow comes... Normally goes to the Berto lift station, which is that white fenced area at the northwest corner of Berto in Devon. It pumps to a M W R D wastewater treatment plant in Hanover Park, east of Barrington Road, south of seventy-two.
Who pays for that?
Um, who pays for the plant?
Yes.
Well, M W R D runs it, and they... It reimbursed through taxes to Cook County residents. So every Cook County resident in Bartlett and within the county has a surcharge on their tax bill that pays for the multiple plants that M W R D runs and maintains and operates. So under normal circumstances, that's what's happening with our Cook County flow. When it rains, we see peaks because rainwater gets into our system either through direct connections, cracks in pipes, you name it. We see peaks in our sanitary sewer, and the way we have... There's an agreement, an I G A with M W R D that says they will take one million. It's one point one million gallons per day flow. So there's a manhole out in Berto that has a pipe that goes to that lift station, and a pipe that heads south down to our Devon excess flow facility. There's a weir in there. So the pipe that goes to Devon is sized to take one point one million gallons. When that surcharges and exceeds that, it goes over this weir where it then heads down to our plant. That plant, we get called, we run that plant. That plant is from nineteen twenty-ish, very old, very outdated, and could not meet, as Paul was saying, the new E P A limit they were putting into our permit was an eighty-five percent removal limit, which is you have to remove what's coming in. You have to remove eighty-five percent of the contaminants before you can discharge. We envision during that period where we're seeing the flows, it's essentially storm water mixed with wastewater, so it's very diluted. So trying to get eighty-five percent removal was very difficult. We were talking to manufacturers on what type of equipment we could install to try to meet that limit, and they couldn't even give us guarantees that we would meet that limit. So we were looking at that and looked at a goal of let's eliminate that excess flow facility, get rid of the permit, and look at other options. We spent years working with M W R D because the ideal situation would be send it all to them. Don't have to deal with it. Just let them pump it to their.
If we send it to bittersweet, like in regards to what trustee Hopkins was asking, then does the tax bill change if it's now coming on the DuPage side or... I'm confused.
It still wouldn't change.
No, tax bill. So...
Let me just try to cap this because...
Yeah.
Yeah, this is...
There's a lot of... You guys haven't been through this, so that's understandable. When there's excess flow, so there's storms in this area, it goes over the limit that we can send to M W R D. We can't send anymore there, so it shoots it down to this nineteen twenty plant. It has to try to get to eighty-five percent, remove eighty-five percent of the contaminants. Almost impossible because ninety percent of it's water, rainwater. So there's no equipment that we can do that way. So that's what we're putting this big holding station to shoot the rest of that overflow down to bittersweet, okay? That overflow eventually is going to go into this holding container, and we're going to shoot it down to bittersweet. But until then, he's talking about the rainwater from the north side.
Right.
Yeah.
Basically, the tax bill.
The only thing that their tax bill has to do with is they... Cook County side of the village gets taxed from M W R D. It's just an assessment on their tax bill. Not by how much their usage is, nothing, just an assessed amount on their tax bill saying, you know, we've done so much this year. This is how much it's going to cost to run, and this is how much you're going to pay.
So how... I thought like at a meeting probably six months ago, we asked about... We looked at that chart, how DuPage is at the top, and Cook is way lower. Didn't we ask a question about looking into something about like what would equal it out better?
You could do apples to apples. You'd have to add like their tax bills that you have to pay additional amount to, and then try to figure that out. It'd be almost... It'd be very tedious.
Yes.
I think the question we asked was, and this is current rates for twenty-one, twenty-two, Bartlett, Cook County pays twenty-four dollars a month on their sewer water bill for just their sewage charge. But a comparable community, Elgin, Schaumburg, Hanover Park, Cook County, they pay twelve dollars, thirteen dollars, fourteen dollars. And now we're going to be raising our rates even higher to cover a bond payment to put a sewer or a force main in. So my question was, why? Why is Bartlett, Cook County different than any other community in Cook County? And I really... We really need to get the answer to that. And I can't... I could never, in my right mind, ever vote yes to raise taxes when there's such a disparity here between our neighboring communities.
Dan, do you want to talk about the distribution?
So as far as the Cook County portion... So getting back to the cost of the tax that M W R D charges for the treatment of the flow in Cook County, that's based on that one million gallons. So anything beyond that is Bartlet's.
Yeah.
Bartlet's to treat. That's why we have an excess flow facility. So that's ours, and the Cook County residents pay for that. It also includes the distribution or the collection system within Cook County. So that's what the rate... The bill that residents in Cook County get from the village is the maintenance of the collection system within that area.
Therein lies your answer.
It does not, because Elgin, Schaumburg, Hanover Park, Cook County pay fourteen dollars, thirteen dollars, twelve dollars on their sewer bill.
Your village isn't paying an overflow of whatever comes over the top.
Thank you so much. Why does Bartlett have that? We need that answer. Why is M W R D?
Went to bat with them a ton of times.
There's a nineteen seventy-one agreement that Bartlett entered into with M W R D.
Who entered into this agreement? The Village of Bartlett?
Yes.
Why did they enter into this agreement? To screw the Cook County residents is what I would like to know.
So in... In nineteen sixty-seven or sixty-eight, M W R D built the lift station at Cook County side of Devon, and upon completion of that lift station, the town's flow coming from Cook County side of Bartlett was diverted through the new lift station. So that was an agreement that was entered into in nineteen sixty-seven, sixty-eight. Since that time, Dan and I, we've gone back to them and asked them to take out that restrictor, right? Remember those conversations? We said, hey, nobody else, nobody else in Cook County has that restrictor, has that agreement. And we were told, no, we're not going to do it. Now, you know, are we... Do we want to litigate that?
Yeah, I do.
I don't know. Well...
I do want to. I think this board should hire an independent attorney firm. They should hire an accounting firm to look over our budget, and an engineering firm that specializes in working with M W R D, and a law firm to find out what is going on here.
Well, we know what's going on.
Well, I do. I know that my rate is twenty... And Cook County residents pay twenty-four dollars, more than double some of these other communities, and now we want to raise it even more? Enough is enough. I am not going to tax our residents anymore until we get answers. So I do want to litigate this, and I think we should take a straw poll, find out what is going on here, because if we hire an independent law firm, they may come to us. I don't.
I don't think it's a mystery of what's going on. I mean, we made this agreement. It's the overflow. We're being charged for that overflow. We have a restrictor. Nobody else does. That's the crux of the issue, I think. I don't think that's a mystery.
Do you?
Go ahead.
But I do think that, you know, we've gone to them, and they said no. So what is our next step? And that's, you know, you ratchet up the fight with M W R D.
Yeah, we do.
Why do they... Because they need it for their budget dollars? Like, why won't they consider it?
Because they just keep pointing to a nineteen seventy-one agreement that I personally do not feel that the village had legal right to even enter into, because now you say, oh, yeah, we're going to take more flow, and we're responsible for it. Why would we ever do that? Why would we ever say we would be responsible for something we shouldn't be? There's got to be a reason. And why did we do that? So you can't just...
I don't have the answer to that.
Exactly.
I don't know what was in the mind of the board in nineteen sixty-seven. I don't have any good records that tells me what that is. I just have a summary of when things were taken.
And I respect that. I totally respect that. All I know is what's before me right now is rate increases that are going through the roof, and before you know it, they're going to keep going up. And then before you know it, this pipeline is going to need to be fixed, and it's going to go up again. And then before you know it, I'm paying triple what this is.
I agree with you, trustee Hopkins. I agree with you. I agree we need some answers, and I think that you bring up a lot of good points, and we've been trying to bring those up for a long time. So I guess that's the direction that we take after this committee, is to see what our next steps could be with M W R D.
If that was to be resolved, would the Devon projects still need to be happening?
Um, yeah.
They would?
Yeah, you have to eliminate Devon lift station.
Well, and to sidestep this, now that rates are going or the cost of Devon exflow pipeline is going up, I mean, right now, the residents of Cook County are paying five percent, right, this year, five percent on money we're not even using because it's been sitting in an account since twenty nineteen.
For the bond?
For the bond payments. I think we went out for bond payments a little premature, and now we're stuck with eight point five million dollars, and we're making interest payments on a project. We're not even going to send out to bid until next year from some of the emails that I saw.
Well, I... Premature, I don't think anybody anticipated what we were going to see in twenty twenty.
Well, I...
Fair, in all fairness.
Yeah. I think my comments from the committee when we were discussing this is, I think we should get an I E P A loan like bittersweet because they're paying zero point nine percent on their loan, and they don't even need to start paying it back until the project's done. Now, we don't even have a project sent out to bid, and we're paying interest on our money. That is beyond me, but I'll leave that alone for right now. So I feel like the residents of Cook County deserve some answers, and that's all I have to say. So I hope that this committee would vote to get a private law firm in here to find out what is going on. So that's all I have to say.
Can't obviously do any voting on the committee, but I certainly do... I certainly do agree with the fact that there's got to be something changed.
And I just...
And just to reiterate, though, I think your last comment was a little bit off the wall with anybody knowing that the pandemic was going to come up, and we couldn't go out to bed if we wanted to on some of those things.
I think my question was...
I disagree with you there. I agree with the fact that we shouldn't be paying money for something we haven't started yet, totally. I get it. It's aggravating. A lot of the villages were in the exact same position. Most of them, they were in the exact same position. If any capital improvement's going on at all, they're in the same position.
Just to follow up with that really quick, the reason why I bring up the I E P A loan is because we did get general rates of an I E P A loan, and those were one and a half and two percent at the time, and we knew our rate was going to be five percent in the first couple of years, and then it's going to progressively go down from there. So we all knew that the rates coming out to bond was higher.
Go ahead, Dan.
We also had thirty-seven million dollar loan that we were already in with the E P A. They don't... They look at communities and how much they're asking for. Thirty-seven million was a big take compared to the other projects out there. So the chances of getting two loans, one for thirty-seven million and one for eight and a half, were a lot less, like...
So you prioritize DuPage County over Cook County?
I prioritize thirty-seven million.
Total amount of money. That's perfect. They...
No, we prioritize the wastewater treatment.
It doesn't take a genius to figure out.
But one county pays one dollar amount and the other county's paying for another. You can't, that's, to look at it and say, you know what? We better not go to the I E P A with this loan, we better send this out to bond and we better get the, that's an un, that's really unfair. But with all due respect, I know this is a very contentious issue with me and I don't mean any disrespect, but that comment was little.
I think Dan's point is that those are competitive bids, um, they're, or those are competitive loans that how many other communities are, are applying for, um, so we prioritize, yes, we did. We prioritize the wastewater treatment plant that needed to be rebuilt for thirty-seven millions and went out to bond on the eight, we did.
And, and another option we can do is scrap this total project, use these funds for something else in the municipality that we need and live with the system we have. And if the I, I E P A wants to fine us, they can fine us. Tell them to give us the money to fund the project and just keep it the way it is. And honestly, there are so many other communities that are getting violations right now as we speak and they're not getting fined, they're just saying, well, you got to improve. You got to do this. So, I mean, we can, this, this.
A lot of different ways to skin this, yeah.
So, I mean, there's other ways to look at this. And I mean, there's a lot that we could use in this community with that, with that bond payment to really move our community forward. And I won't discuss them now, but.
I do have a question for staff. At what, where is the point of this project? Where are we at with it? For the Devon project, where is it currently sitting? Is it out, ready for bid or is it?
It is in for.
Do we have a budget set?
Right, it's in for permit right now with the E P A. With pricing and everything, we're always checking and right now pricing's high, so we're delaying it. Um, we're hoping to go out to bid in the spring. Um, but we'll be touching base with contractors and suppliers to see where prices are at. Um, that project is connected to the Bittersweet Plant. That project needs to get underway and get started before we can start bringing it there. So since that got delayed, we're kind of had time, so we're not rushing to put it out to bid. Um, so we've got a little bit of time before the Bittersweet Plant will be ready for it. So we figured, why put it out to bid now? And when we know prices are high, we'll wait, see what spring brings.
You're looking at a spring twenty-twenty-two start-ish.
Ish, yeah.
Or bidding to.
To bid.
Go out to bid, right.
Were, were contractors considered essential businesses during the pandemic?
Contractors have been working, yes.
So I share a lot of the same sentiments with my very passionate friend here. Um, and so I would agree, I think, you know, my opinion is that, you know, the Cook County residents would definitely deserve an answer before we move forward with it. So put the raise.
Yeah, this is just committee. So we're talking about this in committee, it's a good time to bring it up. We will get some information, I'm hoping, um, the next time this hits committee. But one of the things that we had to have this on committee for is this letter that I got from the I E P A about the thirty-seven million. And the thing that was coming up on the board to vote on is just the intent to accept it. It's not the acceptance, it's the intent. So I think we've beat this enough.
Are, are we going to vote on rate increases at the next board meeting?
Not if we don't have some answers.
I, I think we could split it up.
Yeah.
I mean, I know there are some other costs involved in rate increases besides for the eight point five million dollars and those rate increases are warranted. So, I mean, I, I, I think there's ways that we can look at this so we can pass something at the next board meeting. So we can appease the I E P A and.
But the, the what, what's coming up on the agenda at the, at the board meeting is predicated on the rate increase, is that correct?
Well, there's two, there's a couple of things. With the loan approval, E P A will be verifying that we have the rates in place to pay back the loan. Now, that's the thirty-seven million dollar loan. Um, so we may have to change the way we do that. We got the approval from, we just recently, I don't know if that's the letter you have, holding up there, but we just got the approval from the E P A that they approved our financing plan, which was the old plan that had, that Todd had just given over.
Approved our funding plan. How to fund the payment back of the loan.
Right, so they approved that, but that has changed based on our discussion today and will likely change again. Um, I don't know when we have to have those rates locked in. We may need, I'm going from memory from when we did the Lake Michigan loan. I thought we had to show them that the rates were approved by the board. They were out years, but they were approved by the board that it would cover the loan amount. So we may have to pass sewer rates that will cover the thirty-seven million. Um, and we can tweak it based on the eight and a half, but.
But they do allow us to, over the, over the course.
To adjust each year.
To adjust that each year.
I mean, we could change it as we go to.
So we do have the flexibility to tweak those rates.
Okay. Everybody good with what the staff's going to provide for us now as far as some, uh, more evaluation, maybe some more tactics, maybe get Brian involved a little bit on some avenues to try to push some pressure on? I like Trustee Hopkins' idea about, hey, you know what? If you use this eight and a half million that we have now, if we have other projects that we need to use it for, that's not exactly how bonds work, but you can't really do that.
Yeah, because they're bond proceeds and there's rules about how you.
Yeah, yeah. But, um, but then putting pressure on I E P A about the other stuff, you know? If, hey, Carter Horse here, are you guys going to help us out with I E P A if we can't get this, uh, fixed? So.
Thank you for doing the hokey pokey. I, I know we wanted to have a full discussion before we moved to the other ones.
And this is the reason why we're having it this way. Yeah, so, and, and just, yeah, so we can go ahead and if there's no other discussion.
No, that concludes everything we have on the agenda.
I think the board's got direction, right? Or the staff's got direction? Okay. And thank you very much Chairman Danny. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the committee.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Gun, uh, Gunstein. Please call the roll.
Trustee Gancy?
Where we at?
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Swansky?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes, right here.
Standing committee reports.
The, uh, committee is adjourned.